As we get started, I'd like to lead us in our invocation and word of prayer. And just in your thoughts and prayers tonight, remember the families of the situation down in Miami where the building has collapsed and there's still about 99 people missing in that. And I know there's at least one local person they are looking for as well that's probably in that building. So just remember them. So let's go to Lord in prayer. Dear gracious and Father, we just thank you for this great day. Lord, just thank you for having such a good crowd here tonight and for all those that are here. Or we just pray for those that are unable to be here with us that wish they were. And Lord, as we come tonight, we just pray for the families and the first responders that are dealing with this building collapse down in Miami, Florida. And Lord, we just ask that your hand and hedge of protection be around that community, the first responders, the families, and the injured. And Lord, we just ask that your will be done in those situations and protect them and give them the strength and guidance. And Lord, just thank you for this wonderful country, this great state we live in, and this fantastic community here in Walker County that we all reside in. Or just thank you for allowing us to serve in these capacities as board members. And Lord, we just pray for a successful meeting here tonight, and we just pray that everything that's said and done here tonight will be to honor and glorify you. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You'll stand. We'll pledge to the American flag and then we'll do our Georgia flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our Georgia state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag and to the principles for which it stands, wisdom, justice, moderation.
Thank you all. You may be seated. At this time, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll to establish the quorum, please.
Commissioner Blake Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Whitfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
All right. Thank you. All members are present here tonight. Board members, you do have an agenda in front of you here that is on two pages, so make sure you see both of those pages. We have quite a few items here tonight, but we need to move to approve this agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is approved, as presented. Okay, tonight, we had scheduled a public hearing. This is request from Catherine Cracks, I guess it is, for a rezone from industrial to R3 residential for property located at Zero Happy Valley Road, Rossville, Georgia 30741, tax map and partial number 0-136-017. This did go before the Planning Commission last Thursday. The Planning Commission did table this because the applicant was making some changes in their request. But since this was advertised, we do want to give anyone an opportunity that wants to speak on this. We do have it on our agenda, and it was properly advertised, but this will be also coming up again at the Planning Commission. They'll have it back on their agenda soon, and it will also be coming back before this body as well. Is anyone here that wanted to speak on this tonight? If you would, come forward and state your name. Anyone at all? Okay. We'll move forward here, so that'll close out our public hearing. Okay, we do have the... We've got a couple of sets of minutes here. We have our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting back on May the 27th, 2021, that's in Agenda Packet. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll record these as approved into the record. Okay, we did have a work session, special call meeting, last night for discussion of a resolution that we will take action on later this evening. So we have those minutes already prepared. Appreciate Whitney getting those done so quickly. That was... Meeting was just last night at 7:00, and she's already got everything typed up and ready for this meeting. So do we have a motion to approve these minutes from our work session last night?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll put these into the record as approved. At this time, we have our public comment time that we allow anyone from the community that would like to come up and speak publicly. We do have a timer that we set. Let's see here if I can get this right. There we go. We give you up to five minutes to come and speak and address the board. So is anyone that would like to come speak tonight? Yes, sir. Come on up, and if you would, at the podium, so we can pick you up on the microphone and also that they can get you on the camera. And state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Dwayne Brown. I'm a 23-year employee at Walker County, lifelong career here, and been giving it to the citizens of this county. There's also other employees of this county that have devoted their career and are on a... What we're hearing about tonight is a defined benefit pension program, and the majority has asked me to speak for them tonight. I prepared a statement, and as you know, the county has two different retirement plans, a 401A and a defined benefit plan. We're here tonight to talk about the defined benefit plan. In the previous administration, a salary freeze was put in place at our $2,000 in prior salaries. The decision to freeze the pension-related salary amounts to the $2,000 rates were done without prior knowledge of county employees, effectively denying these same employees the opportunity to choose alternate financial vehicles for their retirement. Once we have figured this out, years later, we have made requests during this administration on four separate occasions for documentations on the defined benefit program and were never acknowledged on them. Walker County has denied these... Access to these records and documents. We had to result into open records requests and paid for by the employees themselves. Calculations in the 401 are based on employees' current salaries. This is different from the defined benefit program. Those in the defined benefit program calculations are on 2012 and nothing else. They can't go any further. 2012, whatever we were making. The decision to change the structure of the county pension was without prior notice to the citizens and without an open meeting, which violated Georgia Open Public Meetings Act, OCGA 5014-1. The change to the county pension plan was perfectly hidden from the employees during both the prior and current administration, and only come to light during these open records requests. According to the document entitled Pension Plan for Employees of Walker County Commission, signed by Commissioner B.B. Haskell, received and acknowledged by Floyd Johnson, and attested by Bridget Garrett on November the 7th, 2013, which does the freeze cap at 2012 salaries, the plan stated that the plan, together with the trust agreement, meets all the requirements of the ERISA, the Employment Retirement Income Security Act of 1974, as amended and qualifies under Sections 401-A and 501A of the Code. Given this fact of lack of notice of substantial changes in the pay plans, violate IRS Code's notice. IRS Code Section 4980F, subsection E, states that each generally requires notice of an amendment to an applicable pension plan that either provides a significant reduction in the rate of future benefits accrued. That was us. We were never, ever notified of any changes or anything. Once we have done this, it has made an impact on the huge reduction of our pension. It also states that... Oh, excuse me. As these actions were conducted in private by the past administration and perpetuated by the current administration, the affected employees have been disfranchised from the rights and privileges of the contractual relationship between the employees and the county. Further, the lack of meaningful progress on the relief to the affected employees have resulted in a financial harm on the future pension benefits for the employees. Two days ago, Chairman Whitfield and Commissioner Hart had a meeting with these employees of the county that fall under the defined benefit program at the request of Sheriff Steve Wilson. In the last four years of your prior administration, Mr. Whitfield, you had made several statements that you were going to work on this plan. We do understand that the fact that you had a priority to get this county back in order. It is a priority to take care of these employees who have given their careers to this county also. You owe it to them and to the rest of us to remove the salary cap freeze and fix our pensions as soon as possible. The Board of Commissioners also have a responsibility to look after the best interests of the employees that serve this county. We ask that you, as a Board of Commissioners, make a commitment tonight to right this wrong as soon as possible. If you fail to do so, leave us no other further than seek other avenues. We don't want to do that. The lack of communication between the county government and the employees on the defined benefit program has been none since this all has come to light. It is hard for us to stand here and listen that we're going to try the ACCG, come with different options. That's all been said to us before. We want a commitment tonight that says you will take priority to fix the defined benefit program and remove that salary cap and put us where we need to be. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak tonight?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
Go ahead. First of all, thank you, Dwayne. That was well prepared, and I understand your frustrations as well. Being a former employee of the county, I was in that old benefit program and took a pretty good look at it when I left. So we understand your frustrations, and I'm not speaking just for myself, but I will speak for myself. I think the other board members will concur with me that we have discussed this on several occasions, and it has been a priority, and that's why these things are starting to move forward. And we are going to make it right. We're going to do what we can do, whatever we have to do to get... To make it right. We've talked about it several times, but there's a process, and for us, us new guys, the district guys, I'm not as familiar with this process, you know? We're just now getting into it. So I know that you feel like the can's been kicked for several... For years and years, and I understand that. I think... But I don't think it's an intentional thing, and I do know that we have a working board together now that can assist the chairman and pull together and see if we can come to some conclusions in a very timely manner and get you some answers and some things that you guys can take to the bank. In other words, not just shop talk. But it's going to take a little time. I know y'all are... And I know it's taken a while already. I just ask to please, now that we have things moving in a direction, work with us and let us keep moving it that way and try to get the wrong straightened out and try to get things to where they need to be. And that's me. I can't speak for everyone else, but I do... I can tell you that it has been discussed by this board on multiple occasions, and that is why we're moving forward with what we're doing, trying to do now. And I appreciate you... I appreciate your...
I appreciate that. And the problem, I think, the underlying problem is the communication, because there's zero between the administration and the employees on what's being done to fix it.
We can correct that... We can correct that communication line immediately, and with these folks that are in this, it's a smaller group of folks, so I think we need to pull... We can think we can agree as a group to pull together a forum to where we can communicate with them a little more often and keep you updated a little more where we are, because like I said, we're not talking about all the employees in the county. This is a smaller group, and I have no problem making that commitment that we can get the communication lines opened up.
Okay, sure. Anyone else like to speak tonight on any topic?
Well, I just want to say also that, you know, I'm committed to... We've been concerned with this since day one, and we want to make it right. It's definitely something we want to work towards to get you guys whole, and it's just been a big concern, and we definitely want to have good, open lines of communication with everyone in that program.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Yep. And I concur with everything they said there. We're... Just give us a minute. We're looking into it, Dwayne.
Yeah, we've all talked about it. We all are very...
And we didn't want to have... I didn't want to have to come here tonight, but with the communication is, we had to set it on the record.
Yeah. Glad you got it.
Well, we need to know what we need to... What we need to work on so that we can, like I said, so it's... We're thankful that you did come, appreciate the presentation. Like I said, you group, please give us an opportunity and tell the rest of the folks just work with us, and you'll see some action, okay?
Very good. Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Public comments? Okay, we're going to move forward then. And tonight, as we have started this year, we're having an informational speaker of an organization or entity that's part of our local government that's going to talk about how their entity and departments work. So we have Mitch Gretchen Neal, which is our Drug Court Coordinator for the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit. So Mitch Gretchen, would you like to come up and give us an overview about what your department does, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I do appreciate the opportunity to address the board on behalf of the Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit Adult Felony Drug Court. Over the past 10 years, or the last 10 years, in response to growing prison and jail populations, the state of Georgia has invested heavily in expanding the presence of accountability courts throughout the state. In 2017, LMJC was one of only two of the state's 49 circuits with no accountability court. It was in 2017 that Chief Judge Graham and Judge Thompson initiated the conversation to establish an accountability court in the circuit. So at this time, Georgia currently has more than 170 accountability courts. But let me first give you some general information about the accountability courts, and then I'll share a few specifics about our program. Accountability courts provide alternative sentencing for qualifying persons with substance use disorder or mental illness, and they lower recidivism and prison costs by breaking... Excuse me. The cycle of addiction. A 2016 study by Applied Research Services found that LMJC had 637 qualified offenders. That's the sixth highest number among the 49 circuits. While I've heard from a few people that were giving the participants an easy path, that could not be farther from the truth. The Accountability Court program is a 19 to 24-month program that requires regular check-ins with the judge, intensive treatment counseling, drug testing, curfews, court supervision that holds the offenders accountable for the rehabilitation. And in addition to these requirements, they must also work at least 35 hours per week. They're also required to complete community service work if they're unemployed. So there's a pretty strenuous program that they work. The goal of the Accountability Court program is to help participants become productive taxpaying citizens who provide for their families and change them from tax burdens to taxpayers. This reduces the cost to taxpayers in social services programs and through the penal system. I've shared with each of you a copy of a report developed by the Carl Vinson Institute looking at the economic impact of accountability courts in Georgia. And according to the report, each graduate produces more than 22,000 in economic benefit to the state while saving nearly 5,000 associated costs. The Applied Research Services Incorporated has performed two recidivism studies for accountability courts and found that any amount in participation in an accountability court, whether the participant completes the program or not, results in reduction in recidivism rates. Since the implementation of our program, we have served 93 participants, with 29 of them having successfully completed the program. We currently have 45 active participants and 15 referrals that are being processed for eligibility. Based on our current level of resources, we have reached our program's capacity. However, we did apply and were awarded a federal grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance that will allow us to increase our capacity to 75 participants over the next three years. While that is an admirable goal, the ARS survey of qualified offenders that I mentioned earlier indicates that we should expand to 127 participants to adequately serve the needs of the circuit. So as you can see, we still have much work to accomplish. The implementation of a new court is not an easy task, but the LMJC Drug Court team has worked extremely hard over the last three and a half years, and as a result, we have made significant progress. On the state level, our court has been certified and completed the peer review process. During the state peer review, they pointed out several areas where our court is excelling and recommended that we apply to be a mentor court. In April of this year, as part of the recently awarded BJA grant, our court had a virtual technical assistance site visit, and during the exit interview, the national TA provider encouraged us to apply to be a national mentor court. While we still have much work to do, we're clearly in a good place for a court that is less than four years old. These successes could not have been achieved without the support of the four counties that we serve, and we're most appreciative to Walker County for providing our office space and also serving as the fiscal agent for the program. So we look continued... We look forward to our continued partnership with you and do appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about our court. So, thank you.
The board, do you have any questions? Comments? Good information?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. I do have a question. Are most of the folks enrolled in the program first-time offenders?
No.
No.
No. These are folks that have cycled in and out of the program, I mean, out of the system. So they have just... It's kind of like a last resort. So it's... Yeah, they've had multiple problems and just trying to break that cycle for them. So this is a really good program that works well for that.
Is there a large percentage that is enrolled like in the mission assisted treatment programs?
We have a very small percentage of that. That's... I mean, if it's needed, we certainly will get them hooked up with the proper clinicians and have those evaluations done, but we try other methods first on the front end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else on the board?
Thank you.
This has really been an incredible program. I have been blessed, really, to be a part of some of the graduations that y'all have had and see literally before my eyes families restored.
Yes.
Individuals restores that have restored those families. And so it's been some very, very emotional graduations that's just really the results of the good work that you and your team have done. So thank you for all that you do, and thank you to your team, and express our appreciations to them.
One of the things that we've been really, just that has been so exciting to us is just to see the level of confidence that comes back to these folks, like, once they get back into the job market and they start to see that they actually can do something. And it's just amazing to see the transformation once they do that.
There's some real... Really good success stories there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a... Under our new business, we do have a couple of resolutions here, and I'm going to read one of these completely. They're both identical, just with different names associated, but these are appointments to our library system, and we do have a letter of recommendation from Lisa Eubanks, the Director of the Cherokee Regional Library System, for these appointments. And so Resolution R. 2521, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Rossville Public Library Board, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the Board is to appoint members to all committees of the Boards with the approval of the Board. And whereas OCGA 20-5-42A provides that the County Board of Trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis, and whereas OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the regional library... The regional board of the library trustees shall consist of trustees serving on member county boards who are appointed to the regional board by each county board for a term specified in writing pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library system. Whereas Doris White, whose term on the Rossville Public Library Board is set to expire on June 30th of 2021, is willing to continue to serve. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve on the Rossville Library Board, Doris White, for a term beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30th of 2024. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Doris White is approved, so resolved and adopted the 24th day of June 2021. So I do bring this to you as a recommendation from Ms. Eubanks, and so this is a motion to this board for this appointment. So do we have a second for this motion?
I'll say it.
We have a second from Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussions on this one appointment?
Sure.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll reappoint Ms. Doris White to this board to represent the best interest of Walker County. Okay, this next one, I won't bore you with all of the legalese, but this is the same verbiage. I'll get down halfway through this. It says, whereas a vacancy on the Chickamauga Public Library Board will soon exist due to the expiration of Joyce Harrison's term, and whereas Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve on the Chickamauga Board, Vicki Garner for the term beginning January... Excuse me, July 1, 2021, and ending on June 30th of 2024. Ms. Harrison does not wish to be reappointed, and so that's why she's not being reappointed. She has served many times and has done a phenomenal job, but she does not seek reappointment, so their recommendation is Vicki Garner. So I present this to the board in the form of a motion. Do we have a second to support this resolution?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we approve Ms. Garner to this board. Okay, at this time, another new thing we wanted to start was to ask our chief appraiser to come each year before us and give an annual property assessment update and share with the citizens about the assessments that have gone out and the process and anything else that you would like to share with us. So we appreciate Mr. Terry Gilbreath, our chief assessor, being here with us tonight, so the floor is yours.
All right. I'll try to keep it short. I already talked with four of the commissioners and actually gave them a two-hour presentation, so I'm not going to do that to y'all. So what... One thing that I do want to point out before I get into this is that the Board of Commissioners has no influence over the Board of Assessors and what we do. So they can't call me or any of the board members and say, hey, I need you to lower so-and-so's value, or I need you to raise so-and-so's value. They cannot do that. They can... Illegal. So... And they understand that, and they kept out of it. So... And when I met with them, it was after we sent notices out, after we had to do what we had to do. So I know some people put stuff on social media and all that, but they have nothing to do with that, and I want everybody to understand that. So... But getting into what we did and why we had to do it, we... By state law, we are required to keep our level of assessment at a certain level. Everybody is valued at 100%, but then you're taxed on 40%. And the 40% is what comes into play in all of that. The... If you take a sale and you divide that by... The, if you take a sale and you divide that by what we have on it, a value, then that will give you that ratio. So, but our ratio level has to be between thirty-six and forty-four percent. So what's happening now with the current market is, it is, it is something else. Homes are selling for unbelievable amounts of money, and unfortunately, that winds up affecting our ratios, and we have to either raise the values or even, even if a situation comes about where the, the market collapses, then we may wind up lowering values. So, but we have to stay within that range according to state law. So that's, that's why we do what we have to do. We don't want to raise values, but sometimes it has to happen, and unfortunately, this time, we had to raise them. We put it off as long as we could. The Board of Assessors, which is who we answer to, they put it off and put it off, and we've, we've been seeing this coming for several years, but we just did not want to do that to taxpayers. And we, so, but now we're gonna have to. So, and that's what we done. We made, we made adjustments to the residential property base values. We went from fifty-two dollars a square foot to seventy-eight, which really is nothing compared to what some of them are doing. Some of, some of the other counties, they're in the nineties, so their, their base values are, are way up there. And, and it's not just Walker County, and it's not just the state of Georgia, it's all over. So, so the exaggerated sales are not just here, they're all over the place. So, so we, we made those adjustments, and we also factored in the depreciation. We haven't done that since two thousand and sixteen. So, so what happened with that is even though we raised up that, that base cost value, we also factored in the depreciation and kind of brought it back down a little bit, where it would have been, been really out there. So with doing that, we've actually came in compliance. Instead of being at thirty-two on our ratio, we're at thirty-six point seven, so we're barely within where we need to be at. So we are measured by that. The state actually measures us by that, and if we don't have those values where they need to be at, that ratio, then the county can get fined, and also grants can be taken away. And how many millions of dollars, you know, are involved with that, you know, with the grants alone? They've got a new thing in their pocket that, that I've seen them applying to something else that could cross over, and they, they could pull the county's charter. Walker County wouldn't exist anymore, and the state could come in and take everything over. So we don't want to get to that. You get to that point, then things are pretty bad. So, so we're doing what we can to, to get us up there to the numbers that we need to be, but not trying to hurt the taxpayers. I know that, that everybody got the notice of assessment, but that thing has the estimate of taxes on it, which is a false number, because the mileage rate hasn't been set yet. Nobody will know until, until it goes before the commission board or the, the Board of Education what that mileage rate is going to be. So the mileage rate determines what your tax will be, no matter what your value is. We could bottom out every value, we could raise up every value, it still depends on what that mileage rate is going to be. The, when you do a revaluation like this, it's called an inflationary increase, and in that inflationary increase, in the taxpayer bill of rights, they actually put in there that the, the governing authorities are supposed to lower the mileage rate to offset any kind of revenue increase. So, you know, that, that part's there, but it doesn't mean that they have to, but it means that they should. Okay, so, and that's without holding free public hearings. So there's a lot of things that, that have to come into play before you actually know what your taxes are going to be. I hate that, that that's on there, it deceives so many people, and we've had so many elderly that have wrote checks out and sent them in to us. We don't collect taxes, not one dime that we collect. So we have to turn around and send those back. So, I mean, when we first started it, it was as many as eleven per day that we were getting. Checks from elderly people upset, thinking they had to pay twice, but it's, it's been a real disaster. But ignore that, pay attention to your value. Look at that value and say, ask yourself, would I sell my property for that? And in this market, and what we're seeing, it's, we're still below it. We are still below it. We're, even with the adjustments that we made and what we're seeing in the next year and some of the deeds that we're changing over, we're still seeing thirty, forty, and fifty thousand dollars more than what we've got on them. And that's, that's scary. Now, we held off on all of that because of the, of the, you know, y'all remember back in two thousand eight when the mall collapsed? We're seeing those same signs, you know, the, the borrowing money of one hundred and twenty-five percent. You know, I've seen them advertise that, and, and they're doing that again. So it kind of scared us, and that's, that's another one of the reasons that we held off, held off on what we were doing. So we don't know what the future's gonna hold. It can't keep doing what it's doing, climbing, you know, and inflation's gonna kick in, and if they increase the, the interest rates, then you could see some of this let out. Some of the things that we're seeing and hearing, people are bidding on properties. You know, they're advertising properties for sale, people are paying more, they're bid, starting a bidding war on these properties. And, and what happens is, once that's finished, that affects what's going on here. That affects all the other taxpayers. So it's, it's, it's very hard to watch, and, and, you know, then now, we're hearing of actual bidders that are paying off other bidders. They're paying them hundreds of thousands of dollars to get them to stop bidding. So that's, that's happening in the United States. We've got, we've got numerous people coming from California, you know, New Jersey, Texas, they're, they're paying whatever to get out here. So it's definitely a seller's market, but the problem of the seller's market is not a taxpayer-friendly market. So, so we do have to make those changes and, and adjustments along the way. And let's keep in mind, all, all of these values are, are derived from the sales. That's where we get our information, is from the sales. We don't make this stuff up. I promise you, if I was able to make this stuff up, I'd make up something a little bit fair, because, because there's things that, that we have to do in, in our line of work that are not fair to the taxpayer, and we hate it, but we have to do it. So, so keep that in mind, we're just like you, you know, we're taxpayers, we're voters, we're citizens, you know, we, we have to abide by the laws, and, and we don't like raising values, but, but we've gotten to the point that we have to. We had no choice. And so be patient with us, we're still not there, and we're gonna have to look at some other things next year, and, and hopefully, hopefully we can get a better grip on it. Hopefully things will calm down, and, but the, the sales are unreal. They're unreal. We, we're built for right around fifteen hundred deeds to be processed through our office. The past several years, we've had three thousand a year of deeds, deeds that have come through. This past year, four thousand. So we, there's that many transactions that are going on in Walker County that would, people want to be here. You know, it's a beautiful county, but another thing was with a large acreage. I had a, a company that we've contracted out with a few years ago, he's, he actually is doing our timber extractions. He, he talked to me a few weeks ago, he said, Terry, I don't understand what's going on in Walker County. He said, but there is no county in the state of Georgia that has as many acre, large acre sales as you have. And he asked me why. He said, and those large acre sale, the values are through the roof. He said, why does everybody want to come to Walker County? And I said, well, it's beautiful, for one thing, you've got great citizens, everybody's friendly. So I said, I couldn't explain that, couldn't explain the why, but it, but for some reason, people are drawn here, and they want to be here. And I didn't even have that part in there on my little, little speech. Get down to the next part here. The, we ask too that you call us. If you've got questions about the notices that go out, call us. We have people calling, you know, people on Facebook calling one another, but nobody will call us, and we'll explain it to, to anyone, you know, what's going on with it. So it's, so please do that, and we are more than glad to do that. So our thing, our thing now, and what we want to do moving forward, is to actually try to keep these things on a yearly basis where they need to be at. Make those adjustments yearly, that's our goal. It takes a little bit to get there, you know, with the, the adjustment that we made here and putting it off, we, we still needed that data, we needed those sales over several years, and then we made those, those changes based off of several years of data. So, so we, we want to get to the goal where we're, like, tweaking each year, and we think that right there would really help the taxpayers where you don't have a big jump, you have the, the small jump or lowering, whatever the case may be. So we, we, the Board of Assessors is actually putting together a plan to actually aggressively do that, where we can keep everything where it needs to be at on a yearly basis rather than waiting three years to get that data together, because, I mean, obviously, with four thousand sales, we now have plenty of data to, to do what we need to do, so. Let's see. There's one thing that I want you to understand in that too, with the, with those ratios, with the, the Department of Revenue measures us by those ratios. When we do, what they do is a three-year review, they come in and they look through everything that we've got, every document, everything has to be signed, everything has to be just right. The first questions that they ask us, what is your ratio? What is your beginning ratio, and what is your current ratio? So we have to show that we're, we're doing that work. So that, that's important to them. The Department of Audits, they check us yearly, and they submit those ratios to, to all the governing authorities and to us. Now, if we don't have those where they need to be at, and, and the way that public utilities works, they don't pay on forty percent. They pay on a equalized ratio that the Department of Audit issues us. Now, if we're down on our values when they do their analysis of us, and you say we're at thirty-two, and they turn that in as an equalization ratio, then the public utilities, instead of being taxed at forty percent like you are, they're, they're taxed at thirty-two. So it's important that we keep those up there so that we have, you know, basically everybody paying their fair share, because it's, of course, now with what's going on with the exaggerated sales, that's hard to do. It's hard to keep up, they're, they're killing us. And I, I went to meetings and, and in different places in the state with, with other chief appraisers and groups, and they, they're all saying the same thing, what are we gonna do? You know, it's, it's throughout the whole state, they're trying to figure out, we can't keep up with this. You know, there's, they're, they're, the sales are so far out there that everybody in the state's having trouble. So, but we, we've got to do what we can do and hopefully not be such a hard hit to the, to the citizens, so. Is there anything else that we need to cover? Well, I appreciate the time and, and all of that. Also too, please understand that we are a separate office, we're, we're not tied to the commissioners, we're not tied to planning, we have no ties to the tax commissioner, because we don't collect taxes. We're, we're kept separate, the law is, it's very specific in there to keep any kind of influence out of our office, they've made us separate from all of them. So to keep that in mind, please don't, please don't call my girls and cuss them out, because the annual control won't answer the phone. We've got nothing to do with that, and we've had that, had that to happen. We don't, if planning doesn't answer the phone, or, or the tax commissioner, they'll call us, fuss at us, but we have nothing to do with any of that. They've, they've done a good job in making sure that we are separate from everything, and so has the Board of Assessors. It's, it's that important that nobody has any influence over what we do. So I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you for coming to the night and giving us a good overview.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
The next item that we have on our agenda is a, is a resolution to appoint a new member to the Board of Assessors, and that was due to a retirement of one of the members. We're gonna talk about that here in a minute, in a minute too. So this next resolution is R. twenty-seven-twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member of the Walker County Board of Assessors, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, and whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the Board is to appoint members to all committees of the Board with the approval of the Board, and whereas OCGA forty-eight-five, excuse me, forty-eight dash five dash two ninety-five provides that members of the county Board of Tax Assessors shall be appointed by the county governing authority, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Walker County Board of Assessors due to the resignation of Farrell Brown, and whereas Mr. Brown's term does not expire until December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four, and whereas pursuant to OCGA forty-eight-five dash two ninety-one, Karen Deck is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Walker County Board of Tax Assessors and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve the Walker County Board of Assessors, that is Karen Deck for the remainder of the term ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to appoint Karen Deck is approved, so resolved and adopted the twenty-fourth day of June two thousand twenty-one. In Walker County, the terms for a Board Assessor member is six-year term, and so this would be having Karen, to keep the rotations in order that we need to, need to have, she would finish out the term through December two thousand twenty-four. So I move this in form of a motion to this body to approve Karen Deck. So do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the appointment is approved by the board. Hearing none, the appointment is approved by the Board. Okay, at this time, we have a proclamation to recognize Mr. Brown for his past service for the Board of Assessors. It's proclamation by the Walker County Board of Commissioner for appreciation for Farrell Brown. Whereas Farrell Brown began service to the Walker County, to Walker County and its citizens as a member of the Board of Assessors on February the twenty-first, nineteen ninety-seven. And whereas these twenty-four years of service has been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of our community. And whereas the Board of Assessors is one of the most complex boards to serve and requiring forty hours of training either prior to or within a hundred and eighty days of the appointment, along with an additional forty hours of approved appraisal courses every two years. Whereas the Board of Assessors must rely on their training to establish fair market value for every property in the county in order to interpret what is happening in the real estate market. And whereas Walker County has benefited greatly because of Mr. Brown's devotion to fair and effective administration of the property tax laws of the state of Georgia, which promises public confidence and compliance. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize and congratulate Farrell Brown for his years of distinguished service and urge all citizens to extend their appreciation to Mr. Brown for serving his community with the call upon. Sign and seal the twenty-fourth day, two thousand twenty-one. So, let's give Mr. Brown a round of applause. We'd like to present you with this proclamation. Would you like to say anything?
I don't know what it would be.
But we appreciate your dedication and service and I know there's many staff members here today and family members and fellow board members. And I think maybe we can take a couple of minutes along with the Board of Commissioners and figure out a way we can all get together and have a group photo. How does that sound? All right.
But I would like to say thank you. I don't have any, any talk ready, but I feel obligated to say thank you. I don't feel deserving of this. I can look back over the time that I was first appointed and wondered what it's going to be about. And it didn't take long that I knew. And then I wonder how they got me there. It's been a pleasure. It was at a, a time in my life that I was appointed. I had worked for the state for some thirty, some odd years. And I was ready to retire. And somebody came in and said, you know, we got something that'll help you spend your time. And I was getting her ready to point them out the other door. And they began to talk about serving as a Commissioner on this and how it could be a way they could fill in the void in my life and that sounded good. I could still be involved with government and with people and maybe, you know, somewhere along the line, maybe, maybe help somebody. So, I agreed to do that and I'm glad now that I did. But it's been more a pleasure than it has been a headache, than our headaches. But the pleasures have outdone the headaches and I've, I've enjoyed every minute of it.
Well, we appreciate your dedication very much. Twenty-four years is a long time and I know, like you said, it's probably been a lot of headaches. I know you've had a tremendous amount of training and retraining and more training. I know that's the way the state has it set up. So, I know you've had a lot of trips out of town to do that training and away from your family. So, thank you sincerely again for all that you've done and your sacrifice to the citizens of Walker County. So, if we could get family members, board members, coworkers or Board of Commissioners. And Joe, where do you think you want to try to fuss?
That's what I'm hoping to get.
I think we're going to have a pretty good number.
Probably up in the jury box there.
Yeah, maybe we can just get a line standing across the front. Some of us can stand here as well. So, Mr. Brown, you want to come on right up here and we'll get you maybe there about the center. You just, just come on right here with it. We're just all going to blend in here where they can be family. Family, coworkers. Make it happen.
We'll get a short one up here in front.
We'll pull this chair down the other way. We're going to be a little informal here tonight. Just kind of get everybody in. We've got a little room down in the center here. We'll move the chairs around. Should, now, pop this through a little better. Okay, here, why don't you two, why don't you come on around this way? We'll put you down in front. No, yeah, we've got you, you're front and center here. Does it look like jurors?
No, no, because you're standing up. I've got everybody's face except for the young lady behind Mr. Brown. If you can slide a little bit closer.
There you go. All right, let's, let's do one more with the, with the board members and you and your wife. Maybe just come up front here with the board members. Yeah, we can do that too. Pretty to see this.
This is the board you want.
Thank you. And we're going to get one of them to, she wanted, want to be giving him the proclamation. Let's see, why don't you, let's, buddy, come on through on this side. You're the Chairman of the Board and you're the one that appointed him the first time.
Years ago.
So, let's do this one. Take, 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 let's look at this job.
I'll get one of them too.
Yeah, I think after twenty-four years, you, you deserve a photo. All right, sir. Thank you again so much. We'll try to find you another job real soon. Thank you all very much. You can come back around this way. See, I'll go this way. Okay, the proclamations are always the fun part. I've always, for the last four and a half years, always enjoyed the proclamations and recognizing people for their service, their dedication to our community. And I can't think of another group any more reserving, deserving from what we've been through as a, as a community and a state and a country, as a world with this COVID-19 pandemic that we've all dealt with. No one more deserving than our public health care professionals. And so, we have a proclamation here tonight where we want to recognize them as well. By the Walker County Board of Commissioners, appreciation for public health professionals. Whereas public health professionals in Walker County devote themselves to providing essential services even when it means putting their own lives on the line. Whereas over the past year, our community has come to realize just how important public health professionals are to Walker County. And whereas our public health professionals have been an inspiration throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, exhibiting courage, responsibility and empathy during times of uncertainty. And whereas for ten months, our public health professionals answered the call to test residents for COVID-19, sometimes performing tests outside in the hot, the cold or the rainy conditions. And whereas for the past five months, our public health professionals have guided us through this pandemic, working days and nights and weekends to get as many people vaccinated against COVID-19 as possible. And whereas public health professionals deserve our gratitude for giving their time, experience and care in an effort to make Walker County healthier. Therefore, I Shannon K. Whitfield, on behalf of the Walker County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim June the twenty-fifth as Public Health Day in Walker County and urge all of our citizens to show their appreciation for Walker County public health professionals whose commitment to serve shines brightly through the dark days of the pandemic. We thank you for giving us your time, experience and care serving our community. Sign and seal the twenty-fourth day of June, two thousand twenty-one. And I would like to present this proclamation to a very, very special person and that's Tracy P. V. House, who is our nurse at our Health Department. She's done an outstanding job. Tracy, would you come up? And I understand that you've made an announcement of a retirement forthcoming.
Yes, right.
And so, we're going to miss you greatly, but I wanted to present you with this proclamation and thank you for all your hard work and dedication and all that you have done. And I know you and your team have really been through it. And I would also like to get a photo of all of your family, friends and coworkers. And Dr. Smith is here with our, our Board as well of Health. And so, if we could give out everybody back to the jury box and take a photo. But thank you again for your hard work and dedication and all of your help.
Whitfield, I would like to say thank you to you and Commissioner Stoltz for the call center and DeCaya. You were a lifesaver during that time. The volume was tremendous and that was put together in a small amount of time and we were drowning. So, thank you so much for that. And Dr. Smith, thank you so much for volunteering, going up there with us. And Robert Stoltz.
We had a great time.
We did, we took a village. And I would like to recognize my partner in crime, Tyler Rogers. She and I have been together at the Health Department for almost twenty-four years. So, we'll go forward and hopefully we'll stay ahead of the day. Thank you so much.
Don't you come up and DeCaya, you come up too. You've been a part of this group. Let's go back where we get with the board.
And Joe, Joe. Joe's had to put up with me not wanting to be on camera ever.
Go here, let's get a group photo together. Play musical chairs one more time.
I couldn't get any of my boys to come because they're tired of the long hours and stuff and they.
Don't tell this to go up there by DeCaya. This is kind of a smaller group. I think we can get everybody in. We always like it when the grants come through. And we've got a couple of grants here tonight. Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Subground Award, project name, Adult Felony Drug Court, subgrant J. twenty-two eight dash thirty-two. And this particular grant, this is one reason why I wanted Mr. Gretchen Neal here tonight because this is what funds their operation. And you'll see that the federal grant dollars is two hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The matching funds is thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. On this one, for a total fund of three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. This grant period starts on July one, two thousand twenty-one, which is the fiscal year for the government, the state, federal government. And again, as it was mentioned earlier, Walker County government is the fiscal agent. So, we basically help them manage their money and, and make sure all the documentation and all the grants are done correctly. This matching funds is a share, that thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars is shared between the four counties. And so, each county collects some court fines that is set up by the state and the acronym for that is called the DATE funds. And I'm sorry, I can't tell you what that acronym means, but there's only about three things that those funds can be used for. It's very specific in the, in the code. And one of those is for drug courts or accountability courts. And so, our contribution over the last couple of years from county government is twenty thousand dollars a year. And those are designated earmarked funds that again, can only be used for a couple of other things, but it all has to do in and around the courts and drug addiction and prevention and those type of things. So, we have another grant here we're going to also talk about that has an additional match, but collectively, Walker County's portion is twenty thousand dollars a year is our portion total. So, since we are the fiscal agent, we are responsible, this body, to approve these grants. This is a, just a repeat of what we've had over the last two or three years since this program's been in place. If they were not doing a good job, the federal government wouldn't keep funding this program. So, this is a whole lot of money and very, very happy to continue to see these funds to be awarded. So, do we have a, any further discussion on this by the Board?
No, sir.
All right, no questions. So, do we have a motion to approve this first subgrant?
I'll make a motion to approve this first subgrant.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion at the Board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this one. We'll sign this one. And the felony drug court, the judge that handles that is Superior Court Judge Don Thompson. And then, the mental health court is by our senior judge, Ms. Graham. And so, this is the grant for the mental health court. Federal funds of $117,778. The total matching funds is $13,086. For the total funding to be $130,864. Grant period as well being the same, July 1st, '21 through June 30th, '22. And this, again, funds the mental health court, subgrant J-22-8-73, which is the next item on our agenda. So, any questions on this one? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this subgrant?
Motion to approve this subgrant.
We have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll sign this as approved. Okay. All right, the next item, we have a purchase order, 2021-1465 for a 2021 Ford F-150 Supercab 4x4 Responder. This is a 3.5-liter V6 for the Walker County Fire and Rescue for $36,329.84. Again, all of our capital purchases over $25,000 does come before the Board of Commissioners for approval. And we have Mr. Pharaoh here with us tonight. Mr. Hodge is taking a couple of days off, and so, Mr. Pharaoh's stepping in, and we would like for you to give us a little overview about this request.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you. The Fire Department, we're requesting a 2021 F-150 Super Crew 4-wheel drive 3.5 V6. It's a responder edition for a total of $36,329. This is part of our apparatus replacement plan that we put into place a couple of years ago. Back in previous times, we'd buy all the vehicles at one time. All those vehicles would run out at the same time. So, we're trying to create a maintenance strip over the years to keep us up to date. The vehicle that this will be replacing is a 2009 F-150 Extended Cabinet, just hit 165,000 miles today. So, 165,000 miles in the Fire Department is a lot of miles, is a lot of hard miles on a vehicle. This unit will be assigned to the Fire Marshal's Office. If you don't know from here, our Fire Marshal's Office spends a great deal of time on the road, performing inspections, investigations, and conducting fire safety education. Aside from the maintenance cost reduction, the new unit will also allow for our Fire Marshal's Office to carry more equipment. And I think this is a much-needed purchase, and we would appreciate your approval if we can get it.
Yes, as Mr. Pharaoh said, we started kind of a replacement program in the Fire Department a couple of years ago. I think that was a very wise recommendation from that leadership team. This is a budgeted item in the general fund. So, this is actually general fund dollars that was budgeted in their original budget. And so, bring this forward to the board, support this, and I think this is very much needed and keeps us on pace. So, do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order request?
Motion to approve the purchase order request.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order will be approved.
Thank you.
Stay with us, and yours has to stop too. Okay, we have a fire service agreement between Walker County and the City of Rossville for provisions of an automatic aid for protection of certain city of Rossville and county roads. So, Ms. Pharaoh?
Under the current conditions, we have what's called mutual aid with Walker or with Rossville, the City of Rossville and Walker County. We have to request them or they have to request us. Going forward, with the automatic aid agreement, we'll automatically get called to their scenes. This is a big deal for us on the north end of the county because of our heavily populated areas. We're working with Catoosa County right now. It's proved to be a tremendous asset. The City of Rossville will respond into the county in certain areas that we've designated on the maps that you have in the agenda, and we will return that going into the city. What this does, it gives us increased manpower, increased safety, things like that. These are for structured fire calls that are truly taxing on your county and city fire departments. So, this is just an agreement between the two departments. We'll send an engine and two chief officers, so a total of four personnel. The City of Rossville will reciprocate that to us with their personnel and their volunteers coming into the city on the north end of the county. This affects LaFatte Road, Wilson Road, a lot of that area, then will go into the city, pretty much the entire city.
These are phenomenal when these can be put together and be equalized between the two governing districts. We did one a couple of, three years back with Whitfield County over in the East Merchi Valley. It's been extremely successful. We recently did one a few months ago with Catoosa County in the Fort O'Phorpe area. This really shows community partnership. It shows collaboration. There's training exercises that they do on a quarterly basis to train and prepare to answer these structured fire calls. So, it's not a second alarm or a request after the fact. It's sending the two closest responding stations on these roads that are loaded into the CAD system. So, when a call comes in for a structured fire on these streets at these addresses, it notifies the dispatch that is an automatic aid, and they will automatically dispatch both departments at the same time, so there's no delay. And so, it gives both departments a better opportunity to save as many lives as possible and save as much property as possible. So, very supportive of this. And to my knowledge and understanding, and if I'm wrong, I stand corrected, but from our research of this, I don't think there has ever been an automatic aid agreement with the City of Rossville and Walker County.
Not that we're aware of. This is the first time that we've ever been able to make it happen.
First time. So, this is a really big deal here tonight. And very proud to bring this forward. This has already been signed and approved by the City Council of Rossville. And if this board here tonight approves this, this will go into effect July the 1st. So, any questions at the board?
I've got a question. So, are there other areas that you're still trying to work out agreements like this, or are y'all pretty much covered all the way around?
We're pretty much covered all the way around. The only agreement we don't have right now is the City of LaFatte, and that's in the works too as well. We have Whitfield County, Catoosa County, now the City of Rossville, Cloudland, Westboro, and everybody that is...
Chautauqua County to the south.
Chautauqua is not on automatic. They're still on the mutual aid with us. But there are some areas, Sublyna, they have some areas that come in.
Well, that's Chautauqua.
Yeah, but not as far, yeah, they have different entities within that county.
I understand, I understand. So, with the City of LaFatte, you say they're working on that now?
Yes, we have talked to them, and that's our last one that we would like to really secure that one in the future is to get.
Good. I hope that gets done.
So...
Anybody else?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion at the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved, and we appreciate y'all's hard work on this and collaboration.
Appreciate you.
I know this document is several pages, it looks kind of long. There's a lot of hard work that goes into this document in collaboration with the two fire services and to get all this information loaded into the CAD system. Many, many man-hours, so there's two copies here. Okay, at this time, we have another guest speaker tonight, and we have our chair of our planning commission. So, we asked Michael Haney if he would come forward tonight.
Hello, Commissioners. I really don't know if I know it or not, but it's cold in here. I had to go outside and warm up, so I can come back in here and talk without chattering. So, I'm here tonight for the Board of Commissioners to present some recommendations by the Planning and Zoning Board. Recently, we've had a lot of citizens from the county requesting tiny homes within the county and various other things within our zoning. So, this kind of is what sparked the board members to bring this discussion up in the planning and zoning meeting and then before the Commissioners. So, I've talked with the county attorney, David Gauntlet, and asked him to draft up some things that I could present to the board in the form of the correct wording for ordinances and try to make a recommendation to the board. So, this, on May 20th, we had a regular meeting. All the Planning and Zoning Commissioners discussed these four items that I'm about to present to you. The first one being tiny homes, and this is how it was presented to them. And this is drafted by our county attorney. Section 22-26, 2B2, is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. Any residential structure within, with less than 500 square feet is defined as a tiny home. A tiny home is only allowed as conditional use in the following zones, R1, R3, A1. A property owner must comply with the requirements procedures for obtaining a conditional use as set forth in the code. A tiny home must meet all the minimum requirements of the International Residential Code and the Electrical Code, the Energy Code, and all other applicable building codes that have been adopted by the Walker County and are in effect as of the date that the building permit is issued. A tiny home must be constructed on a permanent foundation. The only two types of tiny homes that shall be constructed in an R3 zone or an A1 zone are either site-built structures or a residential industrialized modular structure. The only type of tiny home that shall be constructed in an R1 zone is site-built structure. A tiny home shall not be built within 500-foot radius of an existing single or multifamily structure. A tiny home shall not be built within 300-foot radius of an existing tiny home. A tiny home built on a metal frame with wheels will only be allowed and approved in a mobile home park or recreational vehicle park. Within this discussion with the board, there was a couple of things that they wanted to see some changes in and bring before y'all, as this is written with these recommendations in it. One, they were asking to remove the R1, so the tiny house won't be allowed in the R1s. Two, it was to be, Planning and Zoning would strike the entire sentence, add that conditional use is required for all tiny homes within 300 foot of another residential structure. So, they're asking to remove the 500-foot radius and just leave the 300-foot conditional use with any home. And this were the exceptions in our three mobile home parks. So, they're asking not to have it, the 300-foot radius within a mobile home park. But tiny homes must meet all of the zoning requirements of a mobile home park, and tiny homes are not allowed in RV parks. So, this was their recommendation to the Board of Commissioners on this particular item with the tiny homes. Some of the other things that we brought up in it was, one was the private drives. We get a lot of requests about housing being on private drives. Yes?
I don't need to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
Michael, but I want you to clarify something for me, since we've got four items here. I want to understand now. On the tiny homes, I heard R1, I heard R3, I didn't hear R2. I'm curious, what the situation is, why, it's a residential dwelling, and so, in any of our residential zones, especially R1, R2, R3, and of course, agricultural as well, anywhere where you're allowed to live, you know, build and live, that needs to be included. Is there a reason that we didn't, or?
I think there are two, it's for multi-homes, for multifamily residential, so it was to... It's kind of to keep you from having a dual tiny home, basically.
But do we have R2 zoning where we have single-family dwellings? In the county? I mean, that's what I'm saying, a bunch of it. That's my point. And so, and this is all under conditional use, right?
Oh, yes.
So, it would be conditional use in any of them that we...
Yes.
Okay, all right. I just needed to understand that for...
Now, they did recommend striking the R1 from it, but, you know...
It's a residential structure, it's a single-family dwelling, you can't do that, so, all right. Thank you for that clarification.
The private drives presently, it's no more than four, allowed on a private drive. Anything with eight and above constitutes a subdivision. We have a lot of requests, people come in, they're trying to extend either their family or sell a piece of property off, and it creates an issue with more than one home on a private drive, which creates issues with the Fire Department, road, frontage, and other issues. So, this is brought up on several occasions. And then, the board discussed this the other night as well, and I ran this through Mr. Gauntlet as well. Section 22-4013 is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. Abut on the private drive or permanent record easement or right-of-way which serves no more than eight separate family residential dwellings, lots, or tracks, and provides access to publicly, excuse me, publicly accepted and maintained roads provided that the following criteria are met. Section 22-4013A is deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following. A private drive easement or right-of-way utilized for access must be at least 50 feet in width. Each parcel of property that accesses the private drive easement or right-of-way must be a minimum of three acres. A maximum of eight parcels may access the private drive easement or right-of-way. No additional private drive easement or right-of-way may be created from the original private drive. Excuse me, original private drive easement or right-of-way, or any parcel that has access there too. Each private drive easement or right-of-way must satisfy the county. Number one, Fire Department dead-end road requirements, setback requirements, stormwater and soil erosion plan requirements. All deeds and plaits are required to set forth a private drive easement or right-of-way. When this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Board, it became a rather lengthy discussion over many, many scenarios. Planning and zoning recommended to leave it with a minimum of four drives, no more. And then, to, and I'll come back to this stuff in a few minutes. The other thing that comes up quite often is the less than five acres in A1 zone. There was another topic that was discussed in length at the meeting, and we had several visitors there too as well, cause of it. Presently, we have family members that come in that have, say, nine acres, and they want to, and they have two or three kids, and they want to leave that land to their children or some other family member. But because the requirement says five acres and more, they can't separate it unless they're doing it in five acre acreage tracks. So, I understand a lot of them's headache with it, and I understand why the county's got it set that way, and the purpose was to protect the agricultural zoning. So, the discussion was, was trying to look at something that would decrease or bring down the acreage from a five, maybe to a two and a half or three. And fortunately, the board as a group just could not come to any type of resolution to it. And they decided that it felt that it was best to just leave it alone at the five acres present time. So, that was a recommendation, recommendation was to leave the five acres as is for our agriculture. The last thing was is the road frontage that is set forth in the zoning and was to reduce the road frontage from, I'm sorry, the road frontage for dwellings from 100-foot road frontage to 75-foot road frontage. And they're asking their recommendation as well.
So, the recommendation on that was what again?
To reduce it from 100 foot to 75 foot in all the zoning, with exception of A1. They're asking to just leave A1 alone in its entirety. But R1, R2, R3, commercial and so on.
So, it's currently 100, and your board recommended to reduce it to 75?
Yes.
Okay.
It's getting a little lax for the citizens out there.
I understand, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying.
The... The, and, and this is, was being presented to y'all as, as an avenue to get things possibly moving.
That's right.
If that's the case. And give you an opportunity to discuss it and go from there. That's pretty much all I got from the meeting, unless y'all got any questions.
So on the, going back to the tiny houses, it is conditional use in whatever, whatever, whatever zone it would be. So you said that we, as, their recommendation as of now is, is R1, R3, and of course, and like I said, agri, I mean, you can build, if you, if you, if you own a farm and you want to build a tiny house on it, you, I mean, you, you can't, we're not going to stop that either, so I mean, that, that becomes, so, um, so as far as the tiny houses, um, I'd like to see us move forward and start the process. I, 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 I want to make sure I understand the process completely. You guys have run, you, you, so when you, when y'all have done this and had this, this was a public hearing, this was considered a public?
Yeah, it was an open meeting.
Open meeting. So tonight when we're discussing it, that would be our, a, a second one. And then would we have a, how would we do the third? Cause I, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on, on a couple of these items, and I want to, I want to do it in the, in the order which you need us to do it.
I apologize, Commissioner. I, I was not aware that we were going to talk about this, and then it wasn't in the agenda package, so I'm not as up to speak quite candidly as I otherwise would be prepared for tonight. I'd have to go back and look at how many hearings there actually have.
So, so that's, that's fine, the process, so you brought these recommendations to us, and so we, you know, we, we can make an action on these, these, these items that they brought. They're coming to us, recommendations from the planning commissioners. We can either accept, deny, or alter, and make it in the form of a motion, of what the board decides, and then we, then, then we'd head back to, to you and the, and the planning commission to get the verbiage right on any changes that we, that the board would make, and then it would come back before us, or, or, that's what I'm trying to understand.
My recollection off the top of my head is any time that there's a change in the zoning ordinance, that there has to be two public hearings, so we could have, you could have one, for example, at the next meeting would be one, and then the following meeting, I think, would be your second public hearing, and at the time of that second public hearing, you could just like, you know, you can have that and then go right into the regular meetings. I think, I think what you're looking at, and I would like the opportunity to review to make sure I'm saying this correctly. But I think you could advertise for a public hearing, and then you would have to have a second public hearing, and those are, those public hearings are usually conducted at actually seven o'clock on a regular commission meeting night. So it looks to me, I don't have my calendar for when they are in the month of July, but it looks like any action, formal action would be the second meeting in July, the second commissioners' meeting, because that would take care of two public hearings.
Okay.
So, and the 22nd.
And, and that's fine, I just want, that timeframe is fine, and whatever we need to do legally, I, I'm just, we, we, while we're, while we're having it in front of us and we're discussing it, then that, it's the time that I, I want to address it and make, you know, like I said, I've got a motion that I, or two here that I'd like to present myself, I don't know what the other board members have in mind, but we can do that, so, so I'm going to make a motion on the first item, okay, which was tiny houses. And, and I want to make the motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation on the tiny houses, um, and, and with the, the caveat that I think that they should be, I want to, to word it or verbiage that it would be allowed in, as a conditional use in any of our residential zones, in other words. Cause I do know for working in planning and zoning for many years, that there's a lot of areas that the zoning is R2, but it's R1 housing, you know? So I don't want to exclude and say that, well, if your zones are R2, cause then, you know, then we're looking to come back and just asking for a rezone to go to an R1 so that we can do a tiny, so it's all conditional use anyway, so it's all got to be approved. So I, I'll make a motion that, that the tiny, the recommendation from, from the planning commission on tiny houses be accepted with the change that would be allowable in all of our zones, and not excluding any of the residential zones.
Well, I think, let me interject here, I think probably the way the motion would need to be formed would be that you're making a motion for a recommendation that a ordinance be drafted for consideration, so once that ordinance is drafted, then it would be advertised, and then we'd have the two public hearings. And so, and y'all bear with us, it's kind of our first time going through this process with something coming about the planning, so we're kind of feeling our way through this. But that would be, my understanding was that it would have to, you could have a, we could take a vote to, for a recommendation to draft a document.
That's exactly.
For consideration after those public processes, you know, we need to go through those public processes.
And, and so, and, and so the, tonight, or the planning commission's public meeting on this, or tonight's meeting and discussion, that you're saying that doesn't count as a public meeting?
No, I would not think so.
Okay, that's fine, I don't have a problem with it.
Cause the ordinance has not been drafted in there.
I have no problem with the timeframe, I want to get the ball rolling, and that's why I want to go ahead and, and make a motion and get some direction to give to our, our attorney and the, and the planning commission chairman, as well as our planning and zoning director to work together and, and get the documentation correct and the verbiage correct put before us, so.
In your motion, you're asking for R1, R2, R3, and A1, correct?
Oh, yeah, there, it's a, it's a, it's a tiny, it's a residential, single-family dwelling, and, and we allow them, and those are allowed in all of our zones.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner, if I may, because I do remember drafting the ordinance, and then I know that you had a meeting, and you mentioned what the committee's recommendations, there were a few modifications that they recommended, and I just want to make sure that I understand exactly what you're saying. You're saying that as that was written originally...
As he, as he has presented it tonight, what you, what he, what he presented to us tonight.
Okay.
With the setbacks and, and the stipulations in the, in the, for the tiny houses. Like all of it, except the only thing that I, that I feel like needs to be added, that I, on my motion is that we, that we, it's considered in all, all of our building zones. Other than industrial or commercial, you know, so all of our, anything where you can build a residence, it needs to be allowable, and, and it hits a conditional use, so it's not just an automatic, you know?
So you're suggesting what was originally drafted, plus the revisions that the planning board had, minus taking out R1. R1 should be put back in.
That's it.
That's, okay, that, that, I'm getting what you're saying.
And in your original draft, R1 and R3 was in it.
Wasn't it?
R2 wasn't, and he's, he's asking to have the R2 put in it. The, removing the R1 was just the, the recommendation by the planning and zoning.
Right.
And I, and I'll just credit.
You want it in all, the only thing you don't want it in is industrial, commercial.
Right.
R1, R2, R3, and A.
Right, it's a single-family dwelling recognized as that by the, the codes that we work under, by the Department of Community Affairs and our, and our ordinance that we work under, so we need to, if we're going to allow, if we're going to move forward with tiny houses, they need to be allowable in, in all of our zones, as, and like I said, as a conditional use, so there'd be terms that they'd have to make to, to, to do that, so. So yeah, that, that's, that's the gist of it.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And I apologize for not, you know, like I said, I, I don't know, haven't been through this process as far as on this revision, but we'll be, we'll be doing more as we, as a board as we review these ordinance, so, so we need to get it down anyway, so, alright, so.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner ask you to accept the recommendation from the planning commission on the tiny houses to accept the modifications that the planning commission made from the documents they were working from, draft document, and also with the addition of adding back the R2 zone.
Yes.
Is that correct? Sound right?
That sound right?
Okay.
Cause y'all, the, the planning commission and, and, and attorney have worked on this a time, they've, they've had some drafts, and I don't have all that in front of me, so, but you're familiar with what, you know, you're familiar and you're familiar, so I, I think that's, that's exactly.
I apologize, there's some time lapse in between because y'all had schooling and then.
Right, right.
Between we had the meeting and the, and y'all's first meeting that week, where, you know, never get on the gin and dog, and then y'all schooling this, so there, there's been time lapse.
Right.
So it's kind of a little much.
So that's your motion, that's your second, is that correct, from Mr. Blakemore? Any other discussion of that of the board?
Would you also agree, Commissioner, that if there was any other procedural difference, that we would follow whatever the requirements are, that, that otherwise we want to do this?
Absolutely, we want to follow whatever procedures are necessary, however, I am well familiar that it is, that we can, you know, we, we can, we're just changing ordinance, so whatever, whatever procedures are necessary to do it legal and binding, that's what we want to do, but at the end of the day, that's where we're going. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion of this? Okay, all in favor of supporting this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries to pursue that, to get that process started. So your next item was, if we did tiny houses, you had the...
It was the...
Private drives.
Private drives. Was to allow the ability to increase the number of private drives within a, a parcel, but with the exceptions having, having a easement of right-of-way utilized for the access must be at least 50 feet in width. Each parcel that they access, that accesses a private drive must be a minimum of three acres. A maximum of eight parcels may access the private drive easement or right-of-way, no additional private drive easements or right-of-ways may be created from the original private drive, which in other words means you can't branch out like a tree off the existing. There is fire department dead-end requirements, don't have those with me, but I believe the fire department, I'm speaking on there, David, Ken, I'm glad, but if it is, it requires a tee.
Right, a way of turning around apparatus.
Some type of cul-de-sac or something of that nature at the end for them to turn around. They must meet all the setback requirements, they must meet all the stormwater and soil erosion plan requirements, and all deeds and plats are required to set a private drive easement or right-of-way, so they need to have a, recorded in their deed that they have an easement to that entire driveway into their property. This was in, this was in order to, to ensure that someone was responsible as a, for that drive, not just one person, which generally just made the one at the very beginning. And planning and zoning was recommending keeping it at four instead of eight.
And what was the vote count on that? Did you, do you have that information?
I don't have it.
Seven to three.
Seven to three, but the planning commissioner leave it as is?
Yeah.
And, and so, the, the, at, at eight, it, it eight, it eight, it becomes a subdivision, correct? So if we, so you could go up to seven, basically, and at eight, it would have to fall under the credentials of a, of a subdivision, which is a whole different game changer. Mr. Blakemore, how many houses are on the, the private drive that you live on?
Seven.
Okay. We have, and, and I, I won't, I'll speak on this, and anybody else is prepared to jump in, we have multiple private drives in, in the county. I was on staff when we, when some of this was put in on, on the regulations, because we had pig trails that we couldn't get fire apparatus down that, that were just, that there weren't really private drives, they were a drive, basically a driveway. We have private drives in the county, in, in all of our districts that are big, that meet the requirements, but they're being held back from economic growth because of the number two or the number four, what, what'd you say, the, the max, the maximum right now?
Number four.
Yeah, four. And so, I, I, I know specifically of several situations where that opening that, that up would allow, in, in the cases where they made all the credentials and all the requirements, the, the, the width, the length, all, all of that, turn around, and, and, and I, I really believe, and this is something that we've, we've talked about and looked at for quite some time, I, I really believe that we, that everything that they've come, that they've come forth with is, is fine, I don't have any problem with any of the, the, the requirements other than I think we ought to allow in the cases where that they can meet it, and it's not adversely affecting anything, I think we need to allow up to seven, because at the number seven, it becomes a subdivision, it becomes something totally different. But just like, and Commissioner Blakemore and I've had discussion on this because I wanted to understand it, he drives an 18-wheeler truck, a truck, up and down his private drive, and turns around at the end of his own, so, you know, there, there was a time that, that we needed to, to limit that, but I think that we've, we've gotten to where there's properties that people would like to develop that need to, that, we, we need that development, and so, here, that, that's my, that's my take on it, and before I make a motion on that, I, if anybody has anything that they'd like to add, um...
Yeah, you know, one thing that happens several times a year at the commissioner's office is people that come to the office and they want to know why their roads are not paved, and it's never been paved, and we look, and one of the first things we ask them, do you have a blue sign? Or is your, is your road sign green? Because even on private drives for 911 communication, 911 identifies those when they're issued an address and make sure there's a road marker there for public safety. So a lot of times people will come into community, they buy a house, buy a property, they think because there's a road sign, there's an address, and it's a county road, and it's not, it's a private drive, and then they come in, want to know when the county's gonna take the, take the drive over, take the road over, they come in, they don't call them driveways, they call them roads, when's the county gonna take my road in? So y'all can fix it and pave it. And so it's, it's been really kind of heartbreaking, really, that people come in and, you know, we've been struggling for years just to pave the roads that we've got, and we're trying to pave our main thoroughfares now. So really, the difference between a private drive is basically if it's going to be paved or not in some cases, is that, is that a fair statement?
It's, 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 it's a fair assessment, along with, like Mr. Haney just mentioned, that the homeowners have a deed at easement, and there's a shared responsibility to maintain that private drive. And, and as you just stated, Chair, and I think it's a great point, and I appreciate you mentioning that, because, because it, it's, it's very, very viable, we can't hard, we can't, we're so far behind, our paving has, and it's not to anyone's fault, but it's just our paving is tremendously behind. We have a lot of thoroughfares that are, like I said, that we're needing, that need desperate work, and we all know this. And that's one reason that we're not interested in bringing private drives up to county specifications and have another road that the county taxpayers have to assume the responsibility over, when the people who live on the private drive are, are deeded, have, have deeded responsibilities, and it's a, it, it's not a, it's not an HOA, but it's kind of like, it's an agreement that they, that they have, and if it's legal and binding, then, you know, and, and the point that you make about people coming in, you know, there's, 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 there should be, and, and there is real estate disclosure, and there shouldn't be any, anybody moving into thinking that they're on a, a public street that's a private drive, if there is, then there's a problem, that, that's a problem that we, that's actually not ours to address. So, I mean, I, I, I see it both ways, I understand it, I've, I've dealt with it for many, many years in, in Walker County, and, so I, you know, like I said, I just see the need that it's not going to affect it, like I said, a lot of what we know as private drives would never make, they can't put any more on them, they're, you know, they're, you can't get down them anyway. But there are many that we have in all, in all areas of Walker County that, that there could be some, some, some very nice economic growth if they were not being stifled back by just the limiting the number on that private drive.
I mentioned too that, so even if you...
I mentioned too, that, so even if you have 10 acres and you deed off three of it, to deed it off, you're going to have to include that easement in it if you're planning on building another one. So, whoever buys the residence is going to know.
That's right.
Or the lot, they're going to know.
By, by doing this, by taking this, what we're doing now and putting it into effect, they will. They, in the past, they, there, there's been a, a crack for it to slip through. That's a great point, Mr. Chairman, that, that people do come in and don't know. But by adopting and catching our ordinance up where it needs to be and having those, those wouldn't be deeded and they would be recorded, and so when somebody came in, they wouldn't be getting a surprise.
And the, the increase in this to the 20, to the three acres as well. So, I mean, you're not going to come in with 10 acres and put seven. You're going to have to have at least 20, 21 or better acres to even put seven residents on a single plot.
Right, right. So, it's going to be, there, there's some, there's some criteria there as well.
But if the property you're in is on A1, then does, you keep saying three acres. Does that override the five acres you're required to have in A1?
No, if you're in, if you're in agricultural zoning, you'd fall under the agricultural zoning requirements.
So, you're talking about residential?
Residential.
Yes.
Terry mentioned large property tract sales in our county. And I think this is a good example, if this is expanded to seven, I think it would definitely help with the stifling effect of, of growth. I mean, I just think that large tracts like that could, could.
To be accessed.
Yes. I mean, they're going to demand possibly multiple driveways, so, yeah.
I was at the planning commission when they talked about, I was at the meeting y'all had about it, and listened to the argument on both sides. The, the reason I think it was voted on seven, three against changing it to more than four was because of the, the concern about fire support, concern about sheriff support, concern about that many people sharing responsibility for the road and not getting sheriff property and causing disagreements on that road. So, I understand that it is working in some places. But I'm concerned about getting a lot of, like you said, the big tracts of land all getting the soil and people building, rather road in it and selling lots off of it. And.
Well, they can't subdivide now. That, you know, that's, you get into, you get into.
No, you can't subdivide, but if you have a big enough tract of land, you can build a road on it and put seven lots off of it. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that's bad, I'm not saying that's good. I'm saying that I do not think that's, was, that could start happening out in these rural areas that we're trying to protect with some of the other stuff that we're doing. So, that's my point with it, I just think your point is awesome.
Yeah, because like, like you said, well, again, somebody could basically have 24, 25 acres of land. And in essence, subdivided. I mean, that's, that's what you're saying.
Because it's not a subdivision, but you could build a road in it. If I had 20, if I had 50 acres of land in, in Rock Springs, it was on even A1, I could build a road in it now and sell five acre tracts off that lot and have. It's not a subdivision, but in essence it is because you have a road and that, and that road could be a mile long. And then you have seven people responsibility for maintaining that road. And I can just see where the, if they all were good people and did what they said they were going to do, I got it. But if, if one or two of them didn't, then I can see where disagreements would happen.
Sure.
But it can happen with four people too, though.
Yeah, it, it, I, 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 I understand it and I see that that's a very valid point. I, I, like I said, however, I just, I, I, being, being involved in the, in this aspect of the county for as many years as I did, I've seen that need for a long time. And that's why I'm going to support the, the recommendation of the planning commission with, with the specifications, making the, the, the fire department recommend that, you know, as far as all of that. But I, but I'd like to see us move it up to seven instead of four.
Well, the planning commission's recommendation is to leave it as is.
Yep, that's right.
To leave it with, where it was asked, it was drafted as already, and just leave it with, with no more than four.
No more than four. But make the modifications to the, for the three acres, the 50-foot.
And, and, right.
And the recording on the deed.
Yes.
Make those modifications, but still leave it at four is what the recommendation was on a seven to three vote.
That was yes, that was what it was.
And I'm going, and I'm making a motion that, that we follow the guidelines and the recommendations that were set forth for those, because what we've done, what we've actually done is we're requiring more for private drive. Whereas before, you had, at one time, you had, you had to have a utility easement, which was 30 feet, to get utilities back there. So, now we're upping this thing to, to a 50-foot easement and that kind of stuff. And I definitely think if we're changing the criteria for a private drive, then we definitely would need to look at the larger number versus the smaller. Why are we even looking at changing the criteria? So, you know, here again, respectfully, I, I, I served on that planning commission for many years myself. I respectfully understand the, the thought process and, and all. And I, and I see the need and I just, and I've, I've been aware of this for quite some time. It brought to my attention several times as a commissioner. And so, that's why, you know, that's why we're trying to address it, so.
So, was there any provisions for stormwater? I know that's a big issue that we have.
Stormwater, soil erosion.
They have to make, have to make all those criteria.
So, they'll have to have the stormwater, stormwater or soil erosion plan in place. So, it, it included that in there, I mean.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. So, they will have to meet the current.
Yes.
The stormwater requirements.
Yes.
That's good.
Basically, all, all this would do is give, in certain, in, in certain instances where it is feasible, it would give the ability to have more than four on that private drive. Where the feasibility's not there, you, you know, if it doesn't make that criteria, then it's a moot point.
So, if, if it's meeting these other restrictions that are being proposed, and it's also covering stormwater, the difference between someone that wants to develop seven tracts versus eight tracts is what?
The subdivision requirements. If you talk to your.
So, that's.
Gets a little bit more extensive.
It's very much more extensive, yeah.
You're getting the utility easements, you know.
Well, you've got a 50-foot easement, is what you're recommending, 50-foot easement, right of way.
If we're, if we're going, that was to increase. So, if we're going to be able to increase it, we want to, we want to make it where that it's, it's feasible. Like I said, there's places where private drives that they, they can't get 50-foot, they don't have it, they can't buy it. So, there's places that would never affect. It's, it's not a lot that it affects, but it is definitely affecting access to some, some properties that, that. And, 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 and I'll just, I'll, I'll take it a step further. The ones that I'm aware of and the things that have been brought to me are not in, in the essence of, of developing subdivisions. It's where there, actually, some of them are, are family properties and they're on a private drive. And the private drive's got four out there and they've got a, 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 a large tract of ground and want to, want to build like, here again, it's almost like a family variant. Daughter wants to build a house out there. Well, we got four on the private drive, you can't. So, I can't build on my daddy's farm? No, ma'am, you can't because there's already four on that private drive. But you can drive an 18-wheeler down it and turn it around and come right back out. There's not any, you know, so we're smaller goat. I mean, this is just a little less restrictions and trying to allow a, a little bit more economic growth, but doing it in a positive way.
But for clarification, I mean, really, what, I mean, I think some of these requirements are very good. Just trying to get my mind around what's going to be the difference between someone that comes in and does seven or someone that comes in and does eight?
Eight's a plat approval. You gotta, I mean, and you can't, and, and I.
Okay, so plat approval, and what else would there be?
Well, there's a.
Subdivision requires, I mean, you get.
We've got a lot of requirements. We can have, Mr. Brown, would you come up and speak on that for us just a little bit, please, sir? Just a basic, because it's a totally different ballgame.
I thought you were going to speak.
So, subdivision requirement's going to require plat approval, stormwater, and they're going to have to build the road to county specifications.
On your subdivisions, you have, Commissioner Askew, that's going to come in and build a subdivision. He's going to take the responsibility of the plat, the utilities, the water, the stormwater. He's taking that responsibility. Whereas the private drive, each individual lot, they will, they're responsible for their utilities, their water. And whereas it's just like, like I said, he's taking on that responsibility. He'll do all the, the plat, your stormwater. He'll have the engineers design it to meet our, our stormwater. But a private drive, anyone can come in, Brian Hart could come in and build a house.
And still have to follow the criteria.
Still have to follow the same. But it's, it's an individual instead of, of, like your construction company.
Okay. So, with stormwater, where there's, where the engineers lay out retention ponds, there's a, there's an agreement that has to go on the deed about the retention pond. So, if we have someone develop seven livable tracts, how, how do you think we would manage that?
As far as the detention pond.
And managing the stormwater after the fact.
If there are any three or four acre, five acre lots, you're probably not going to have one. That's more of where you do like your PUD, where you put 500 homes on 100 acres. You have more impervious surface.
There you go.
That's where you get into your detention ponds, not on individuals.
But this proposal's going to have stormwater in it, so.
It is. For residential, there's BMPs, there's different requirements for residential. You get into a subdivision, you have an overall development. And then, I believe they call it towster areas, but you have the, when you have your contractors come in, some of these, they have to follow the guidelines of the engineer's specifications for a stormwater. He still has his retention pond for the whole development, they just have to meet it. And then he has to approve everything. It's, it's a complicated process.
And with your stormwater, you have to remember, you have to disturb an acre or more. You still do your BMPs, which is your silk fence, your socks, whatever keeps any of that soil from leaving that property. Then if you get over an acre, where you have 5,000 feet of impervious surface, that's where your civil engineer comes in and draws your plans for you. But most residents are not going to disturb more than an acre at a time. And if, the way it's set up now, the way it's, the government does it, you can come at less than an acre, you can disturb it, you can stabilize it, that goes away. And you can do another acre. So, if you keep it under that 44,100 square feet, your BMPs, it's not. And that is, that's part of the stormwater. I think it's getting run together on that.
So, in, in that explanation, really, then what it comes down to is the difference if the, if they're required to have an asphalt road or not. It's really what it comes down to.
Yeah. That's where you get into your impervious surface.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? So, any motions at this time?
I would like to make a motion that we leave it at four acres. I mean, four houses per private drive. I'm probably the only one, but I'll still make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart to leave it at the current standard of four acres.
What they recommended.
What's the recommendation? Oh, excuse me, my fourth, yes.
Yeah, we're getting a little.
Four driveways. Recommendation to leave it at the four driveways with the recommendation of the planning commission.
Four residents on a private drive.
Yes, I'm sorry, I said it wrong again. Four residents on a private drive per the planning commission's recommendation. So, do we have a second for that motion? A second for the motion? Okay, motion fails without a second. Any other motions on this?
I make a motion to increase it to seven.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz to increase the private drives from four to seven. That include the additional recommendations of the.
Yes.
Okay. So, it's a recommendation of a motion to increase from four to seven drives but include the additional provisions that was recommended by the planning.
Correct.
Okay, is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Three yes, one no. Okay.
And the last thing was, first of all, they recommend leaving A1.
What'd you say, Mike?
They recommend leaving A1.
Leaving A1.
They do not want to dabble in the agriculture and try to protect it. That was a huge discussion. But the, the increase, the decrease in the road frontage requirements is what they were recommending. And from a, from 100 feet to 75 feet. And that was the last thing that I had.
Okay. And that's only on residential or is that all, which zone is that you said?
It's all zoning except for agriculture.
That's their recommendation forward is to decrease it to 75.
Increase it to 75.
And that's on R1, R2, and R3?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just want to make sure.
So, we've got two, the two items left, the, the less than five and the road frontage that we were. I think on the less than five, I think we need to uphold the planning commission's recommendation to keep it at five acres for agriculture. And I would, just saying, and, and if, if that's up for discussion, if anybody's got any discussion on that or not, I'd make that in the form of a motion.
I don't, I don't know if we would need to have a motion if we're not making any changes.
Well, if we're not making any changes, then we don't. But we want to make sure we cover the bases. If we accept the planning commission's recommendation.
Yeah, I think all the, the planning commission does is to make a recommendation. So, I do think it would be appropriate for the board to approve, modify, or reject.
That's right.
Very good. Okay, so your motion is?
As long as there's no other discussion, if there's anybody's got anything else, I would make the motion that we accept the planning commission's recommendation on remaining, keeping five acres as a minimum in agricultural practice, in agricultural period. Keep that. That, that would address that. And then on the, the road frontage.
Well, let's just take the one at a time, so we don't have the other question. We've got a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission to leave the agriculture five acre requirement in place. So, we have a motion from, from Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second to that?
I'll say.
We have a second from Commissioner Blakemore. Now, is there any more discussion on that topic?
No, sir.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, unanimous to leave that is on the five acres. So, the next item that we've got is a recommendation from the planning to go from 100-foot of road frontage to 75-foot of road frontage in the R1, R2, and R3. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to accept that recommendation from the planning to go from 100-foot to 75-foot, but that only applies to R1, R2, and R3. So, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. So, those items will be now sent to the attorney. He'll work those items up, get them into proper form, and get them advertised. And we'll be taking those up for final approval in, in meetings to come and also public hearings.
Thank you for your.
Yeah, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, on our agenda here tonight, we have another long resolution here to read. But this is a very important one, so we definitely need to read this one. Resolution R dash 028 dash 21. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County for the purpose of enacting a temporary emergency moratorium on the acceptance of applications for zone, for zoning approvals, building permits, land disturbance permits, and any other approvals or permits or processing of, for issuance of decisions on any such applications regarding new large-scale commercial poultry house operations or the considerable expansion of existing confined feeding commercial poultry house operations. Whereas the Board of Commissioners Board has determined evaluation is necessary to determine the effect of large-scale commercial poultry house operations on the natural resources, environment, citizens, and neighborhoods of Walker County. And whereas the concept of a large-scale commercial poultry house operation is not consistent with a family farm operation that has been common in Walker County. And whereas waste disposal practices associated with large-scale commercial poultry house operation contributes to high nutrient loading on waters of the United States and current disposal practices severely impact the ability of the state of Georgia to meet water quality standards in the Cusa River Basin, in the Tennessee River Basin set by the Environmental Protection Agency. And whereas the board is aware of a number of poultry farms in northwest Georgia that are proposing to buy property with no existing potable water available for the purpose of building large-scale commercial poultry house operations. And whereas the board desires to reach a balance between the rights. the rights of poultry growers to use their land and the rights of neighbors to enjoy their own land without suffering odor, noise, dust, and other conditions caused by large-scale commercial poultry house operations, and whereas the board needs time to review county ordinances pertaining to large-scale commercial poultry house operations, consider drafted changes, advertise, and hold public hearings required by law and adopt said changes. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby enact a temporary moratorium that is established as follows. Number one, this moratorium is enacted for temporary and emergency purposes only and shall be in effect through and including a hundred and eighty days from its adoption, or it is repealed whichever occurs first. Two, this moratorium applies to all applications for any permit approval or issuance required for the construction, expansion, or operation of a new, expanded, large-scale commercial poultry house operation, for the purpose of this moratorium, large-scale commercial poultry house operations shall mean any grouping of nine or more structures designated to house, process, chicken, or turkey. Number three, neither the county nor any of its staff or department shall accept applications for zoning approval, building permits, land disturbance permit, or any other approvals or permits, or process or issue any decisions on any such applications regarding facilities or structures for new or expanded large-scale commercial poultry house operations. For this moratorium, large-scale commercial, uh, large-scale commercial poultry house operations shall mean any grouping of nine or more structures designated to house, process, chicken, or turkey. Number four, no action taken by any person or entity during this temporary moratorium shall serve to vest rights to deploy or operate any large-scale commercial poultry house operation. Five, previously approved large-scale commercial poultry house operations shall not be permitted by this moratorium, uh, from operation under the consistence with prior final approval, so resolved and adopted the twenty-fourth day of June two thousand twenty-one. Uh, this was part of our work session last night, we had invited the agriculture community to come to that meeting, we had several that came, uh, we had, uh, a few comments from that meeting that was captured in the minutes, uh, but, uh, we've had a lot of, uh, discussion with some of our neighboring counties that are dealing with these same type issues. So is there any other discussion from the board on this? Okay, uh, if not, we'll move for a motion, do we have a motion to approve this temporary moratorium?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimous. Okay, this, uh, next item that was on our agenda was part of what our public hearing was earlier tonight, uh, the, uh, planning commission tabled this, because again, they're, they're gonna come back, the property owner's making some, uh, modifications to their request, and so they asked that it be tabled, so it would be my recommendation that this board also tabled this and let this go back through the advertising process and through, uh, the process through our, uh, planning commission, and then it will come back to us, uh, once that's done. So do we have a motion to, to table this decision at this time?
I'll make a motion to table this decision.
Okay, we have a motion to table this by Commissioner Blakemore, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this item would be tabled at this time. Okay, uh, it's nine fifteen, so I'm gonna just hit a couple of high points here in a lot of time, uh, the statistical data, but we did have on our, uh, animal shelter intake, a hundred and twenty-three dogs, a hundred and twenty-seven cats, that was two-hundred-and-fifty animals that was brought into the shelter, and that was, uh, a high for this year thus far in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, code enforcement was able to, uh, find seventeen hundred ninety-three in compliance, they've had citations on twenty-four, and was successful of getting fifteen cases closed and, uh, getting those folks in compliance, which is always a good thing. Uh, fire department responded to four hundred and forty-five calls, smoke alarms installed, had a great month, sixty-two smoke alarms installed, that was phenomenal, that goes to a hundred and fifty-four for the year, so thank you for, to those of you that called the fire department and had them come out and put your smoke alarms in, and they're willing to do even more. Uh, roadside litter picked up, twelve thousand seven hundred twenty pounds, uh, nights at Mountain Cove, ninety-five, single-family homes, uh, we had twelve in May and also twelve in April, so there's still people building in homes, and so we're glad to see that. Uh, we added, uh, jumped down there to new subscriptions to our newsletters, twenty-three of those, four hundred and sixty-six potholes patched, and thirteen hundred and sixty-five transit trips, uh, in the month of May, so there's more details there that you can look at, and it's also posted on our website that you can see that information. So at this time, uh, we come to our, part of our meeting where we allow, or ask our commissioners to speak, and so we'll start over here to my right, District One, Commissioner Blakemore, any comments you'd like to offer at this time?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out, uh, thank everybody that spoke tonight, thank you, Terry, for explaining that for us, to the citizens, and as always, if anybody has any questions or concerns, you can always feel free to text, call, or email me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blakemore, Commissioner Askew?
I'd just piggyback off of Robert, uh, you know, appreciate everybody that's participating and helping us as a board to be more effective, the more participation we get, and the more input we get, it helps us to understand, thanks to our departments for, for coming and giving us their, uh, updates, and, and just, again, reach out to us if you've got questions or, or concerns or ideas, please, reach out to any of us and, and appreciate your, your, your attendance.
Commissioner Hart?
Agreed, yes, thanks, Terry, and, and the ones that spoke tonight, uh, a week from Saturday is the first, Fourth of July I bet we've had in two years in my faith, so they're having that at, uh, it's not at the rec center where it usually is, but it's at the Ross Avenue Complex, the old high school, so, uh, the city's got a big event planned for that, so hope you can get out of that, thanks, Robert.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Terry, and everyone else that spoke, thanks for everyone for coming, um, just wanna say real quickly, uh, great job to our road department, our right-of-way's are getting mowed and looking really good, and I also wanna say a great job to our animal control officers, had a lot of interaction with those guys over the last couple of weeks, and they're working very hard and being very professional. And regarding the Fourth of July celebrations, the Chattanooga Valley Church of the Nazarene is having their Fourth of July celebration this Saturday, festivities start at five o'clock, and fireworks start at dark, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to also say, mentioning fireworks made me come to my mind, and speaking of our animal control, uh, many of our animals don't like fireworks, so we just wanna remind and encourage everybody, when you start hearing fireworks, especially on Fourth of July, if all possible, bring your animals in and comfort them, 'cause, uh, usually on the Fourth of July, the day after, we usually have a lot of calls for animals running at large, uh, that typically wouldn't, but they get scared with all the noise, and sometimes they, they panic, and so just would like to remind everybody about fireworks and taking care of their pets. Uh, and again, thank you all for coming out tonight, uh, we do have, uh, a couple of items for an executive session, so I would like to make the motion that we go into executive session to, uh, to review some, uh, real estate matters and also some legal matters that need to be discussed, uh, with our attorney, with the board, so that'd be the motion that we have to go to executive session.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, and as soon as we get through with the executive session, we will return to wrap up this meeting. At this time, so at this time, we move for a motion to officially adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew?
By all of
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.